To order, please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Good evening, everybody. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tap into online news filed with the town sub-clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dye, Mr. Marzullo.
President.
Mr. Shonur, Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here.
Good evening again, everybody. Before we start, I would like to make a statement. So, we're at the halfway point of my first year on the board, my first year as president, and the first year of a new board majority. I wanted to give a brief update of what we as a board are working on and my perception of the key issues which we face. As a starting point, this is the first new board majority in many years, and I hope and believe that we have begun to change the culture of the Board of Education meetings. Although not everyone is satisfied all the time, and even though there was a problem with someone blurting something highly inappropriate during public comment at my first full meeting as president, we are making a conscious and successful effort in our board meetings to model the behavior we expect from others in the district, treating each other with courtesy and respect, drilling down on issues and problems, and seeking and implementing solutions. No matter how hard you try, there are always glitches. There were a couple of unfortunate incidents at graduation, and we intend to sweep nothing under the rug. You will hear a resolution tonight addressing what took place at the graduation ceremony. Second, we are encouraging the superintendent to praise and honor district staff when warranted and to hold district staff accountable for their actions when needed. As board members, we hold each other to the same standard of conduct that we hope others follow. We are part of this community just like you are, and while we are not permitted to discuss personnel in public, you can assume that we share many of your concerns and see many of the same strengths and weaknesses that you do. Everyone should understand that in New Jersey, school boards do not and cannot initiate personnel decisions. The legislator gave that job to the superintendent, but you may rest assured that as a board president, I discuss all issues regularly with Mr. Grosso. Third, we are acutely focused on security. Since we can accomplish nothing unless we can provide a safe environment, I expect that Mr. Grosso will this evening, in his remarks, address the next steps in our planning to assure the continued safety of our students and faculty. Fourth, we are trying hard to walk the tightrope of complying with state mandates and still allowing our parents to raise their children as they see fit. In terms of diversity, EDAC was well-intentioned, but for reasons that need not be revisited, EDAC was not nearly as successful as it might have been. We will work with the superintendent and his team to retool and refocus the district's efforts towards meaningful diversity and diversity compliance. And fifth, we look to assist the administration and the staff however we can by providing the resources necessary for our kids to achieve academic success. All of the other goals I discussed should really be viewed as a means towards achieving this end. As the school year begins, I feel confident that you will begin to see tangible change. At this time, I open the meeting to the public for any comments on the agenda. We don't have anybody had signed up, so I close that portion of the meeting. You sign the one for at the end.
No, that's the first one.
Oh, did I read the wrong one?
Yeah.
I apologize. I'm reading the wrong one. Okay, let me get my little spiel. So, the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Please preface comments by stating your name, address, municipality of residence, and group affiliation. Please be mindful of your statement length. Keep each statement to a three-minute limit. Participants may not speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. Please direct all statements, questions, or inquiries to the presiding officer. Any questions or inquiries directed to a board member shall be redirected to the presiding officer, who shall determine if such statement, question, or inquiry shall be addressed by the presiding officer on behalf of the board or by the individual board member. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's statement, question, or inquiry if it is too lengthy or abusive, obscene, or maybe defamatory. These rules may be waived if necessary to protect privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting. Mrs. Medina. And I apologize for that. I was looking at the wrong one.
Myra Medina, 76, Old Orchard Court. I just have a question within regards to B-10 on the agenda. The reasoning as to why the change of lawyer, or at least seek representation for this specific docket, and if it's something that everyone with the board voted on.
Absolutely, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Edelstein, and you will see why.
Yeah, it's not a change of lawyer. So, here's what it is. One board member, Ms. Dye, filed an ethics complaint against two other board members, the board president and the board vice president. They're entitled to have legal representation. I can't represent them because it would be a conflict of interest since there are board members on both sides of that issue, and I represent the board, so it's necessary to hire a lawyer to represent them in that matter, and that's who Mr. Alloia is.
Not a problem. I would just take a look at the docket number, because I think that might be incorrect.
I'm sorry?
The docket number, that might be incorrect.
Hold on. I don't know. If it is, we'll fix it before the...
Yep, that's why my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, close that portion of the meeting. Committee reports. We'll start with Mrs. Miga.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone here and watching at home. I hope everyone is enjoying the summer so far. It has been a bit quieter this month than it has been in the past school year. I only have a few items. June 21st, I attended a very nice middle school graduation. Everyone did such a nice job, and I was honored to be able to address the class. June 22nd, I attended a little wet, but nice Cedar Grove High School graduation ceremony. The students did a great job, were very respectful of one another, and they should be very proud graduates. I'd also like to congratulate all of the graduates, families, and friends for a job well done. On July 11th, I did attend a town council meeting, and I just want to put this out there, to please note that the next movie with the Cedar Grove Municipal Alliance is July 26th. The movie is Sing 2, and it's at Morgan's Farm, starts around 8:45, and you're asked to bring your own lawn chairs and blankets for comfortable seating. I also attended a July 14th personnel meeting, which I cannot go into. And I just want to put a side note out there for you, those of you mostly watching, since there's barely anyone here. I know I often address this here, and I address the joining of the FSA, the APT, the Black and Gold Club, the Music Matters, et cetera, the clubs that are in the different schools, and I find that it's very important. I think it's also important to support them with your time. As you see from information coming out, looking for volunteers, I highly encourage you all to get involved. It might be something you think is so small, what you can give, but that won't matter. Believe me, from being an officer on all these clubs, except for Music Matters, every little bit that somebody can give does help. Every little bit that somebody can donate does help. Cedar Grove is built on volunteerism, so I ask you, please continue the tradition and support your children in your schools. Thank you, and have a great summer.
Thank you, Mrs. Miga. Mr. Marzullo.
I do not have any reports. I just want to, you know, say that I did attend the both middle school and high school graduation. Both events were a great opportunity for us to attend, one as a family member, one as a board member. I just want to wish our graduates and their families the best of luck, and to our high school graduates specifically in their future endeavors and continuing the success of all Cedar Grove graduates. So, I wish them luck, and it was a fun, and I'm glad that that ceremony was outside, bearing Mother Nature there, but, you know, I always feel that it's important for all friends and family members to attend, so we were good with that, so good luck to everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, I have to admit, I'm glad that we were able to pull that off and stay outside. I think it was important to the community and the families to have everybody there. And thank you, Mr. Grosso, for giving me the opportunity to give the speech and address the graduating seniors. That was quite an honor. And wet, but definitely a very positive day, so thank you for that.
I did say to Rob Gorgi that evening, I said, "Kudos to you for having to make these decisions about will it rain, won't it rain for games?" Constantly. Or, "Will it snow, won't it snow?" Like, you know, it was, I think it was definitely the right call, but a challenging one.
I want to echo Mr. Marzullo, where he talked about how, and, you know, Ms. Dora, it was very important to have all family.
Absolutely.
I know that because my daughter graduated high school, and if I wasn't able to have my whole entire family there, it's just, it's a memorable milestone in a child's life and for everybody.
And the parents. And the grandparents. And the stumbles.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm glad, and listen, we, everybody, we were soaked. We were definitely soaked, but, and those gowns went through onto our clothes, but it was a great night, and I'm really happy for the graduates and the families too, so good friends.
Yeah, it was great. It was really great. Okay, we have a board presentation tonight. Lego built, so we are going to hand that over to Beth.
Are we going over to the monitor?
Yes, we are. Yes.
My name is Janine Barboza. I am the supervisor of elementary education, and just to start off, I would like to dispel any rumors. If you saw me hobbling on my crutches, I did not step on a Lego, although all the parents watching and the parents here know that there's nothing more dangerous than a floor full of Legos, so that is not the reason. Anyway, I am beyond excited to share this presentation with my team, with the parents, the students, the staff, because I truly believe, and I hope, that this is the beginning of something amazing, that this ignited a new shift in not just steam, but in the way that we create a classroom in Cedar Grove. You can see up here, we're talking about Lego Summer Bill 2022. The likenesses are uncanny of myself and my right-hand man, Mrs. Katie Daniele, fourth grade teacher at North End, who came on board as the supervisor. She was really with me. It was a partnership, the beginning, middle, and end of this, and she will be presenting some things later, and so I would like to thank her. So, the first slide. I was here on March 21st with a very, very short, brief presentation saying, "Hey, we're going to have a Lego camp." And it really was because of a lot of people who said yes. Mr. Grosso, thank you for saying yes when I presented the idea. Mr. DeVita, the board, thank you for all being enthusiastic about this. The families, we had over 50 families respond to the initial survey, and of course, the instructors, because you are already the heart of our school system, and for you to willingly and enthusiastically keep those teacher hats on into your summer, we wouldn't be here without you, so thank you for that. So, we partnered with Lego Education. Emily Luongo was our representative. I met with her bi-weekly. She helped us get started. The instructors participated in a brief training, but it was really on their additional time where they dove into the kits, which I will explain shortly, and they got to experiment just the same way that the students would. Before I go into detail, I am so pleased to announce that it's full steam ahead for Lego Education. We are piloting them, piloting the kits and the program in our schools. I'm so proud of the staff members that were our camp instructors, but they will also be our leaders this year as they pilot it in their classroom, and we have all intentions of continuing this program next summer, extending it to K-8, lots of different options. I think all of our minds were blown when we really found out how much Lego Education has to offer. One of the positives of this program is it's truly student-driven, and our representative, Emily, early on in our conversations, used a phrase called "digital natives." And it's true, these students that are in elementary school, they are, they were born into technology. It's second nature for them. They were helping each other during this camp more than the teachers were, and that was completely good with the teachers. They were embracing that experience. Right from the beginning, well, total number of participants, 59. T-shirt design was our Cedar Grove High School sophomore, who's in the STEAM Academy in the robotics program, Arda Durinzu. We initially gave him a very brief idea of what we wanted for the t-shirt, which several of us are wearing today, and he came back with this design. Our volunteers were in grades 6 through 12. Josh Romero, Angelica Ferrera, Joseph Ruggiero, Chris Kubeta, Brugu Patel, Nyla Medina, Isabel Medina, and Samantha Jordan. I do want to point out Joshua Romero, who just graduated. When he was in 7th or 8th grade, he was part of the Pilot STEM Cycle class that Mr. Jeremy Lugomano ran, and I will never forget Josh and his classmates doing a presentation at North End about the first robotics in Cedar Grove. And fast forward, he's graduated and he's going into robotics engineering at NJIT. He and the other students all said, "Wow, I wish I did this when I was younger." So, that was a huge takeaway. The volunteers did everything from help coordinate daily, the sign-in, they monitored the students, they helped them in all of their builds, they cleaned up, they prepped for the next day, and they were there the entire time. So, round of applause for the volunteers. Thank you, if you're listening somewhere. Sorry, Siri, I will not say that again. The kits and the builds. One, I have a phrase up here, "low floor, high ceiling." It's an instructional approach that this is what Lego embodies. When you have a task or a challenge that's too far over a learner, they become removed from it. They don't want that challenge, but when you have a low floor, it means everyone can enter the learning experience. Everyone has an opportunity to be engaged and be invested in what is taking place in the activity. While it is a phrase that lends itself a little bit more to math and science over the years I've heard it, it could be for anything. Now, low floor, everyone can be welcomed into it. High ceiling means it's limitless. This is a type of program that differentiates itself, and the students met their own challenges because they were the ones who developed it, and that's at the heart of instruction, so I needed to mention that. And the way that low floor, high ceiling is achieved is with these kits. K-1 had the Brick Q motion kit, or unplugged, there was no technology. The lesson planning that came with it had stories and videos and examples. The students were able to make sale cars, hockey games, dance party, all because these pieces, which are unlike a regular kit, all enable the students to basically use simple machines to create motion. There were spring-loaded pieces, a weighted Lego that would be put on a catapult to cantilever and send a piece of string flying. They were amazing, what these students did. The 2nd through 5th graders used a kit called Spike Essential. Here's where the technology piece came in. There is a hub that is connected to the Chromebook with Bluetooth. There's a motor, a light, a color sensor, and all of the builds included all of these moving pieces, and this is, I mean, both kits really blew the minds of our students, our teachers, and the parents when they got to see the showcase. And Mrs. Daniele, I'd like you to click on the Lego web app. So, every single day, when the students came in, they were able to access a free web launch app through Lego. Click on the Spike Essential. And we'll click on the units. So, these units are the lesson plans. Let's go to the Amazing Amusement Park. And we developed lessons, lesson plans together. We'll scroll down and we'll pick something. And this is what the students used on their Chromebooks. It was two students per kit. Let's do the twirling teacups.
Crowd favorite.
That is a crowd favorite, for sure. So, the students were guided through a story in which they had to solve a problem or address a task. And Mrs. Daniele, if you click on all of the arrows there, the students went through the steps of the build, so yes, they are being given specific instructions, but towards the end of the build, they were asked to connect the hub, and this build will now be turning into a coding program in which students had to create block code, and we'll just click that X for now. And so, they had to drag all of the pieces. Even if none of these students knew what block code was, they know now. And by the end of the week, we had these yellow kits with our kindergarten and first graders, so with the help of all of the volunteers, the younger kids were able to do this too. And this coding, kids could record their own sounds, there was a light, it was crazy. And I think it was on day two, in your class, which you're going to talk about later, these kids were thinking, "I'm going to try two hubs. Can I have three? Oh, maybe I need two computers." And their minds were just going. Go to the next slide. So, now, Mrs. Daniele is going to talk a little bit about the sample schedule and our Friday showcase in which we invited parents.
So, every day, the students came in, and they had different blocks. And at the first block, they were given a task through the Lego, where they had to solve a problem, using all of the materials given in the kits. Then they had a quick snack break and went to block two, where they would actually build another piece of work and also would add to things or use other things to make their machines better. We were able to incorporate art and ELA within the program in certain parts of the day as breaks or task breaks, and then at the end of the day, the students were sort of given a little bit of a free time, where they were able to take everything they learned that day and build what they wanted to build. So, if they wanted to make a car better, they could have, or they could have just started a whole new build on their own. And we did this every day, Monday through Thursday, and then Thursday was a complete free build. We were lucky enough to have students to return to the camp for a second week, which we weren't expecting, but after the first week, so many students asked to come again, so we gave those students a choice to level up. They could come in as leaders, improving on their builds, they could use a different Spike app. They were also able to lead the classrooms on Monday as a shadow, where they would work with a brand-new student and lead them through their very first build and their very first coding, and then when they were done, the new student was able to go ahead and work on their own. We also gave them the opportunity, if they chose not to pick that one, we also chose that they could open up to the science exploration, robotics competitions, or they could come up with a problem that the community faced, and they could come up with a solution to that problem. We did have a robotics competition the very last day with Joshua and Brug, and they really understood the science part of all of this, and when their showcase to the parents was mind-blowing. So, on Friday showcase, everybody, every day, on Friday, everybody came in and decided to plan what they wanted to build for their parents. Some did blueprints on paper, some just started building whichever learning style worked better for them, they chose. Then they created a design and made sure it worked, and before parents came, each student was able to visit the other classrooms to see what the students built, using either the different kit or using their own kit, but with different ideas. So, they're using the multiple hubs. On Monday, students were given one hub, and by Friday, students were coding so much, they were actually using four hubs at once. And they had to code, keep track, keep track of their computers, keep track of their tabs, and this is where the volunteers really came in helpful, because they, like Ms. Barboza said, are natives with all this technology, so it was so helpful to have them there. At the end, each student left with a personal learning kit, which had all of these pieces, and you could make a basketball hoop, and each student, that was the one that was marketed on the cover, but also we sent out to all the parents, all the different links to all the other, sorry, all the other units that they can build, so they have access to all of that now. So, the successes of the program were the creativity, the imagination, competitive spirit. Students were competing against themselves to make their work better or theirs to look better. Teamwork, when there was ever a problem, students had to work together to solve it, because they was really a student-based learning. Exploring the process was just something we talked about all the time, in particular in elementary school, that not just getting to the end, not just solving the problem, but working through it, and students spent so much more time on the process. Problem-solving, highlighting mistakes. So, when students made a mistake, they had to solve it, so they had to figure out what pieces they need or what coding had to be changed in order for their machines to work. Following directions, communication. Independence was a big one, because a lot of the times, the students came right away to a volunteer or teacher, but they were sent back to work on their own, and by the end, students were very independent. Making connection, persevering, innovation. And with all that said, we did have a lot of fun. We were able to send out a parent feedback forum, and some of the comments that we got was that "My son had the most wonderful experience. He enjoyed camp, each day of camp, and was inspired to continue his Lego experience at home. Thank you for working with my child each and every day to bring out his potential. Thank you for communicating with me each day about his progress. It was a great program. Thanks." So, the feedback was 100% positive. Everybody seemed like they very much enjoyed the program.
Before I introduce the teachers, and I know their names, their names and their Lego counterparts are up there, I want to say that as a teacher, it's more than just a job. You have an inherent desire to want to see others be inspired, to support them, to believe in them, to bring out what makes them passionate and alive, and our teachers saw that in our students, but I also believe that as an administrator, part of our responsibility is to do that for our teachers, to provide them with support and programming and opportunities that invigorate them and inspire them, because that is just going to translate right to the classroom. So, I was very, very, just very happy that all of our teachers basically found something new to be a that all of our teachers basically found something new to be excited about. And that's going to, they're going to pay it forward when they pilot it in the classroom. And I'm grateful that they had that experience. Danielle, Jacob, and Victoria Tedesco led our K-1 classes. Dana Placenti, Diane Palmieri are 2-3. And Krista Masato, Beth Legra are 3-5. And I do have some comments from some of our teachers. Victoria Tedesco, who, I will add, put together the absolutely amazing video that we are going to show momentarily. She stated, "I truly can't put into words how tremendous my experience was at Lego camp. In my two weeks, I feel I have grown as an educator. And I feel like I could be myself." "There were differences between the classes, but the same outcome was achieved, the students' love of learning. The program was a perfect mixture of differentiation, innovation, creativity, rigor, and cooperative learning." She went on to say, "It was amazing to hear the students' conversations and watch them problem-solve. By the end of the week," no, scratch that, "by the end of the first day, these children became the teachers." And she's very grateful to be part of it. We had her husband, Mike Tedesco, who is the computer science teacher at Cedar Grove High School and part of the STEAM Academy, come in and watch the students. And he said it was amazing to see how advanced the STEAM coding and engineering skills were of these young students. He was not only amazed at the amount of work they did, but how quickly they excelled. And he was very proud to see his current students volunteering and facilitating to help the students in what they did. We have another comment from Diane. "After finishing a very challenging year, it was so refreshing to watch these students build and discover through Legos. Working with and watching the students analyze and comprehend how to solve the problems with Lego builds was beyond interesting. And it gave me a spark, and I look forward to piloting it next year." Dana Placenti says, "I can honestly say that I simply had a blast and I was so happy to be part of this experience. What's not to love about Legos, especially when they move?" She's looking forward to piloting it in the fall. With each new build, the students came up with challenges. And to see their minds working, the gears turning, was just amazing to see. And her favorite part was witnessing her own student going through all the steps and seeing something very special in him that she had not seen during the class year. All the children need to explore. They need time off the computers. They need space and time for challenges and to overcome them. And Lego allows for all of this. It's a chance to be mindful, yet playful. I know that all of them could have gone on and on about this. We have two special guests today that I know would like to contribute a couple of ideas. And I would like to invite Krista Masato to take the floor and share some of her experiences.
Hi, everyone. I just want to share what my experience was at Lego camp. I just celebrated my 54th birthday. So you go into situations like that knowing that your students know more than you do. And that is, I think, the hallmark of an educator. That's what it means to be a lifelong learner. So I know that I went in excited about the fact that I was going to learn while watching my children participate in this program. Two things really stuck out to me. Up on the presentation, there was the word "connections." That was incredibly exciting. Listening to your students, Mrs. Legra and I shared that classroom together. And all of the children in that room had some elementary understanding of physics, force, inertia, friction. To watch them make the connection, to listen to them have the conversation as they were building a taxi, as an example, of why it wasn't working the way they wanted it to because there was too much friction on the ground. Or to talk about, as they built their golf course, the fact that they needed to apply more force to get the ball to go into the hole-in-one spot at the end of their build was thrilling. Because now you saw that, okay, they understood those things conceptually, but they were applying them. So that was one thing that really stood out to me. The other thing that stood out to me as an educator is that spark that you've heard my colleagues talk about. And Mrs. Legra and I, one day, were working together. And we were talking about, as the children were building an underwater dive, about all of the connections you could make to different subject areas in our classroom. So the children had to build a scuba vessel that was going to save a sea turtle. And we started talking about the fact, well, wouldn't that be great to write a story from the perspective of the sea turtle on the day that they got saved? Or to have the children act as though they were that underwater explorer and keep a daily journal of what they did while they were exploring, searching for the sea turtle? So those two things really stuck out for me. I'm incredibly excited about the opportunity to pilot this in my classroom because it was very clear that the learning was, in fact, that high ceiling. It was limitless. And I thank Mrs. Barboza and Mr. Grusso and Mrs. Daniele for the opportunity to do it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Beth Legra. I also wanted to thank everyone for allowing me to participate in this awesome program. When we began, we were given this kit. And I thought, well, the children will build. Well, what they did was, they took that as a jumping-off point. And then we learned very quickly to applaud any of the designs that they made that actually didn't work because we all came around and we watched and we talked about and we figured out why it didn't work or what did. So that really encouraged them to listen to each other. And those cooperative skills and highlighting mistakes, definitely agree with that. And I just felt, again, the support, the learning, and the encouragement that went on that week fueled me and filled me up with joy. So I thank you for allowing me to be part of it.
Thank you both for being here and contributing. You are going to see for yourself with an amazing video with pictures and videos. And I do believe that if we included all of the media, the video might be seven and a half hours. So once again, I thank Victoria Tedesco and Mike Tedesco for spending so much time editing this. And I think Mrs. Daniele wants to introduce an extremely special guest. So we have Matthew Mendez with us today. He's a Lego camper. Come on up, Matthew. He's going to help us with the video. And go ahead. You want to start it?
Now you guys created this without any plan.
It goes slowly on, but then goes fast.
Wow.
Griffin, tell Mrs. Barboza how the gears work.
When it turns, this one turns, and then it makes the wall turn.
How do you feel about the fact that the teachers are not doing this step-by-step with you? You're really more on your own and you're exploring. How do you feel about that?
I feel, I like that.
I feel like I'm like, because like we're just free. We use our imagination and we just do whatever we want to try to make our Legos cool.
I feel like I'm in my basement.
So tell us what you're thinking about here.
Adding a light to it.
So you're adding a second hub?
If we're adding the light, then maybe we should take this and connect it to the same hub.
Yes, we should connect it to the same hub.
But how do we get this to go in?
We need to put this in.
This is very, very sophisticated thinking, lady.
Break that down for me.
No!
Vlad, what's the safety feature? Explain.
These are very solid. Small kids won't go into the Ferris wheel because then they will get hurt. So we got kicked out of this one, so you're...
I'm so excited that you thought of that. Wow, that's very clever, Vlad.
We got kicked out of this one, so I'm just going to tell you what it does.
How would the two of you feel if you got to do some of this and use the kits in your classroom next year?
Like, that would be fun.
That would make me feel the same as Lego camp.
Oh, that would make you feel the same. And that's a good feeling, right? That basement feeling when you're in your basement.
The one that I still have to organize.
So if your teachers had it in your classrooms, how many times a week would you want to do that?
Every day. Just every day, every day, every week. I wouldn't want to leave school. Yes.
Awesome.
If we had it.
Sounds great.
Oh, very cool. Yeah, look at how your wheel and axle works there on those front wheels.
Friends, what grade are you going into?
Second.
First.
Second.
First and second, okay. And what did you build today?
A roller coaster. It's a submarine roller coaster.
A submarine roller coaster. So what do we have here? What is that called? All those little pictures on the phone book. Block code. Can you say that?
Block code.
It's like the little building blocks that make robotics and other machines work. So why don't you press play and we'll see what happens? Can you press play? Yep.
And these have the arms, and also the feet.
That's awesome.
Can I see it go again?
Huh?
Maybe pee a hundred times.
Yeah. Look at that. That is so cool. Great. Look at that! What was the most exciting part for you?
When we started to code them.
Did that surprise you?
Yes, both of us.
Both of us? Tell me. Tell me more how it surprised you.
Because when I, like, when my mom said...
When our mom said it was just like a regular Lego camp.
And when I saw, like, my mom got an email from Lego camp and it was like a video.
Yeah.
And they were on like the computer. And all I saw was like something move. And when my mom said, like, you were going to Lego camp, I thought we were just going to build Legos, not move it.
Yeah, we didn't know we were going to be like using motors, engines, to make our Legos like come alive.
So what has been the best part for you?
Probably, like, our free build. Yeah, probably our free build.
The free build that we're making?
For the showcase.
Why is that your favorite part?
Because we put a lot of work into it.
And it's just like, we find stuff and we just like make them do that.
But I learned how to like use...
I learned how to like work with other people because when I do my Legos at home, there's usually nobody helping me. So I learned how to work with other people.
I learned like how to use like the materials that like I have in front of me. Like, instead of like me and my Lego lab with a bunch of Legos, I just have like one, like one kick.
To build whatever we can build with those Legos.
Do you think that it's something you would do again next year?
Yes, a bunch of times, all the way through 5th grade.
Oh, you want to keep going?
Yeah, I just want to keep going.
Keep going?
Yeah.
And is this something that you think you want to learn even more of as you get older?
Yes.
And have more classes? Is there anything else that you would like to say about your experience at Lego camp? About what you did, your teachers, or anything like that?
What I did was, I built something and moved.
We built stuff that we like, we didn't even know that was possible, that we could build.
How about Mrs. Masato's favorite color? Very cool. And what in your coding tells us that? Is that the rotation? Is it at the start of the program?
I put it at the end, so it gives time for the box to go into the...
Okay, can you do it one more time for us? Nice.
And also thank you to the IT team for preparing all of the Chromebooks for us. That's all, folks. Thank you for your attention. Looking forward to more. Thank you very much. That was really amazing.
Hope you feel better. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Okay, at this point, we're going to move on to the superintendent update.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Well, I first like to, while everybody's walking out, I want to just thank everybody again. I had the pleasure of coming on. It was a Wednesday. And the work that you all have done with the students are absolutely remarkable. The thing that really inspired me, you inspired me with our conversation about the excitement and the creativity that you had. And I got it, it was very contagious. And I will tell you, the kids were excited. And I love talking with all of you because you really were extremely excited about doing this. And that just spread right onto the kids. And they did remarkable things. Like, when I walked into those rooms, I was amazed at what they were doing. So this is just the beginning of something absolutely fantastic and special. And I'm very excited to see where you all will go with this. So thank you. And thanks to the families who participated in this and the kids because it was a great experience. So thank you, everybody. Really want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I want to share that we had a great end of the, for the close of schools. I also was there at the graduation.